Barnes, would you pray?
I sure will.
Thank you.
Our heavenly Father, we're thankful for the opportunity we have to be here in council for our committee of a whole meeting and pray that thy Spirit will be with us as we discuss the things that are on our agenda, that we'll be blessed with the insight to guide us in the things that we discuss and make decisions about and pray for thy guidance in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you. I'll call the meeting to order and welcome Channel 32 and Bill Hill in the back from the Temple City Star, welcome. And I guess
Shem's back there.
Shem's in the
He just said, "Welcome."
Presentation.
So do we want to do delegation first and then do adoption of the agenda or do you want to do a de- doesn't matter?
Adopt it first.
So, yeah, okay, any additions to the agenda at all?
Move for adoption of the agenda, pass, presented.
Thank you, all in favor? Great, thank you. So let's have our first delegation, J.D.
Hello, council. For the past few months, I've been performing an internal accountability review based on Municipal Affairs Accountability Review Program, or what we call the MAP. And so the MAP is a program that is ongoing and was initiated in 2018 by Municipal Affairs with the objectives to support municipalities under 5,000 in population in Alberta, to support them with legislative compliance and understanding. So essentially, the group from Municipal Affairs selects municipalities and then goes and visits, they look at their policies, procedures, bylaws, they watch some council meetings, and they have approximately 80 requirements under the legislation that they check. And Cardston wasn't able to be included in their last round of this. And so Jeff had decided that this would be a good program for me to do. He gave me a copy of a report from Municipal Affairs, and so I used that as a template for the report that I have, or that you guys have, and to, as a guide as to what type of comments to make. And so throughout this process, I reviewed all of the requirements and points of legislation that the program looks at, and I'm happy to say that largely, by and by, the town is very compliant with all the legislation, and so that's good news. However, the real value of the report is finding out where there are gaps, you know, not finding out where you're already succeeding. And so in moving to that section, in section 2.3, I've identified some legislative gaps that have come up through this review process. And a lot of these gaps are minor and will be easy to remedy and fix. And once, so we'll go through all of them now. And then subsequent to this, over the next month, I'll be addressing the needs that, the changes that need to be made, making some modifications to some of our bylaws, and then I'll be bringing that back to council for recommendations on how these gaps can be filled, most likely in October. Now, there were some adjustments that are quite minor, and so taking, I guess, the first item, pecuniary interest, the only adjustment that needs to be made is in how the pecuniary interest is declared in the minutes. You know, there isn't anything that has been found to be at fault that the council is doing. It's that the minutes need to be, or included in the minutes, need to be a description of the interest. So while that's a gap, it's not a change in how things are done, it's just to include a little bit more in the reporting of it in the minutes, which will be easy for us to adopt. And another one that is also small is in the passing of bylaws. This is specifically related to bylaws that require three, or three readings in one meeting. And as you are aware, in order for that to happen, there has to be a unanimous vote to carry the third, or to accept a third reading in the same meeting. And the process for doing that has been accurate by the council. All that needs to be done is, in the minutes, it needs to be recorded that it was unanimously carried, instead of just carried. And so, again, a very small change, but something that needs to be done to be completely compliant as well. So those are some of the small and minor adjustments that we'll be making. There are some other adjustments that are more relating to bylaws, and that's with the borrowing bylaw. There was approximately four borrowing bylaws I reviewed, and two of them were fully compliant, and two of them, in essence of the bylaw, were compliant in that there weren't any errors made by council or administration in preparing the material and presenting it and doing the proper procedures in passing the bylaw. It was only in filing that it was, there was a little bit of a gap in where the loan terms and conditions and agreements are to be stated in the bylaw. And in the bylaws that were in error, they're stated in a schedule, which in itself isn't in, against the MGA, but the schedule wasn't included in the filing with the bylaws. So, you know, the bylaw being accurate, it's just, you know, to be compliant in those senses, just to include that schedule in with the filing. And the public participation policy. And so this is, again, the policy in itself is compliant and fine, but in the regulations that are identified through the MAP analysis states that the policy needs to be readily available for public inspection, and it's suggested that to do that, it just needs to be added onto the website. And so that will be something that we can do to easily remedy that minor gap. There are a couple of items that are going to require some work in the bylaws, and with the one, the largest, the one that requires the most work is going to be the Assessment Review Board bylaw. And so this bylaw is, where this bylaw fell short is that it stipulated an incorrect number of board members that needed to be assigned to the Assessment Review Board by council. The MGA states that we require three, and we currently, in our bylaws, say there, we only are supplying two. As well as that, the MGA states that council needs to dictate the, or set the remuneration and the expense claiming parameters for board members. But in our bylaw, we've delegated that authority to the designated officer, which is the Old Man River Regional Service Commission. So those are just some small tweaks that will need to be made in our bylaw to bring that up to full compliance.
Can I just ask you some clarification
Of course, ma'am.
On this one, because I'm part of that board?
Sure.
The Old Man River is the one who pays us.
Right.
So how does that work?
That's going to be, that's a great question, mayor. It's something that I'm going to need to really investigate, and I'll be talking to Old Man Regional about that
Thank you.
For clarification.
Thank you.
Counselor?
DJ, along with that question, does Jill, acting as a secretary, does she not qualify as our three? Or do we actually have to have three certified assessment people?
It states that the, that the council needs to supply three board members, and so I don't think that Jill, being the secretary, would count as one of those.
Okay.
And they don't all need to be councillors, they can be member of the community that are trained.
That's correct. There are two other, two other bylaws that need to be amended, the subdivision authority and the development authority. The two amendments for these bylaws are quite minor, in which the MGA states that organizations can act as board members on these boards, and the bylaw needs to identify that, and our bylaw omits that. It talks about the type of individuals that can, but it doesn't provide for organizations to, so that'll be a minor amendment that will be coming in the future. And then the, now, let's see. In regards to the bylaw, the bylaw officer, the bylaw enforcement officers' bylaw, the MGA states that the complaint processes and disciplinary actions in relation to any peace officers in the municipality needs to be outlined in the bylaw, in the enforcement officer's bylaw. And in our bylaw, that, that area of policy is referred to the employee association. And so whatever relevant information on complaint processing regarding to our bylaw, our peace officer, and disciplinary action needs to be taken out and specifically outlined in, in the bylaw for enforcement, so that's something that I'll be working on as well. So it, yeah, so those are the minor legislative gaps that was found during this assessment. Are there aren't any other questions regarding those? Again, I'll be spending the next month working with Jeff, and specifically in regards to the Assessment Review Boards, dealing with ORSCs and making the necessary adjustments to the bylaws in order for all of these remedies, or all of these gaps to be fixed, and I'll be bringing them back to you guys in the subsequent meetings.
So in your listing, there is one more item that you didn't touch on, maybe because there's no gap, or maybe there is disposition of election
Oh, right.
Material.
Yeah, thank you, mayor, I happened to overlook that one. So this was an interesting, an interesting finding, as lots of these were, going through this process was very informative. But part of the disposition of election materials is that there needs to be an affidavit of the people who provided the disposing or the destruction of the materials. And in our records, we have, we have documentation of the destruction at the appropriate times and of the appropriate materials, but I wasn't able to produce affidavits of the people who performed the destruction. So this would be something that's not necessarily needing a bylaw to be amended or fixed, but simply a, something needs to be brought to our attention for next time.
Thank you.
Quick question. Hold up, Counselor Silk, Counselor Bangle, and then Counselor Barnes, please.
Got a question, J.D., but good job. You did a better job than Municipal Affairs would have done in terms of our review. You got down in the weeds where none of them would have gone before, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's
Question for Jeff. Jeff, since Counselor Brown and myself are on Policy Review Committee, should we be sitting down with DJ and going over this?
J.D.
A lot of these, because they're bylaw, we'll probably just bring them to council. I think I said this eight months ago, we need to have a Policy Review Committee here.
I'm sorry.
But some of these others, yes, the public participation, although that's one we just have to post.
We just have, yeah, the policy is fine.
I'll look at that if there's a need for that, council.
Thank you.
So in the, in the bylaw, is there a set time that we have to hold on to all the ballots before they're destroyed? What is that time?
I don't remember offhand what the time is. I think it could be in the realm of 90 days or something like that, but I don't remember offhand. But it does specify, the provincial legislation really detail, or has it step by step as to you do this, you hold on to these materials for so long, they are destroyed at this way, and it's spelt out fairly clearly.
Just in case there happens to be a recount or something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's only so many days you can apply for a recount, and we hold it far longer. It's in the Local Authorities' Election Act, and I just, that's one I didn't bring with me, council, so I don't have that on me. I wasn't anticipating election questions just yet. So
Get a year to find it.
We keep them locked up in the safe for quite a while after an election.
Which we really don't need to, obviously.
Well, to a point we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do to a point.
Yeah.
So, mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to add to what Counselor Silk said. Well done. That review is so important for us, in a sense that it fills the few gaps left in our governance model that we have. When we had the review done, three years ago now, I believe, with George, five years ago, with George Goff, my time is flying by, we had an excellent time reviewing a lot of policies. There were about 100 different items that were reviewed over three years, and council was well appraised of that. And I really think that the comment that you made at beginning, that Municipal Affairs didn't get around to us, they were well aware of the progress we had made in addressing all the points of governance that had been brought by George Goff at the time. So I'm really, I'm really pleased with council for the hard work that was done, and for administration, who took that seriously, because obviously, you're proving a point. We done our work. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, J.D. Shem?
Got your props there.
Got props. So, as you are all aware, I'm here to talk to you about the town flag. I sent everyone an email with an interesting TED Talk. I hope everybody was able to take the time to watch it, it's somewhat entertaining. And I'll be drawing from the principles that they shared in that TED Talk in my presentation. So.
I mean vexilological, it's enough to gag you.
You should be reading.
Shem has trouble with the A.D., because it doesn't make me feel as bad.
You should be reading that at 3 o'clock in the morning, I can't sleep.
Vexilological.
Yeah. Keep that handy by your bedside, so when you can't sleep, grab it.
Okay. So the town has depleted its supply of town flags. Last time we put in an order was 2013, and we were down to one or two left. So we were talking about putting in a new order, but since past year, council may recall, we've been awarded a new flag. So the opportunity presents itself to either adopt the heraldic flag as a new flag of Town of Cardston, order a bunch of those, or update the current flag. It's interesting to note that there's no legislation at all about flags, so municipalities, you as council can do and decide whatever you want to do for flag for the town, or multiple flags, or no flag. It's up to you. So I took the liberty to go downstairs and actually look at some of the old flags that we had in the rec room. Some of you may remember when some of these flags were flown, so the current flag is a four-color design, it's essentially just a town logo or town crest on a white flag. And this logo was adopted in 1990. Here's a version, that's only a three-color version, that would have been flown prior to the one we're flying now. Found one from the 87th Centennial. And this one, which also have the little desk version for it, we found downstairs. And those of you that watched the TED Talk, you recall, he made some, the commentary on, you know, states using just their crest on a blue flag, so I thought it was kind of funny that we had one of those. And this was the crest that was in use prior to the current logo. And prior to this, it looks like we actually had a flag that was a good flag design according to a vexilological viewpoint. I don't know if anybody present remembers when this flag was flown. I spoke to Blaine Jensen to see if they could do a little bit of research on Cardston's flags, to find out how many times they've changed. But as I mentioned already, recently, we have been granted our memorial bearings. So these emblems were presented to the town as part of Canada's honors system. So all honors that are presented through the Crown, the Canadian Heraldic Authority is a part of that system, and this is an honor that has been bestowed upon the town, acknowledging and recognizing its achievements and contributions to Canada. So when we received our arms, notice of the grant was published in the Canada Gazette, which is the official newspaper of Canada, and currently, our arms are registered in the public registry. So if you go on Google and you Google "Cardston flag," that flag there is going to be the one that pops up in search results. So it is recognized by the federal government as Cardston's official flag in the Register of Arms. That being said, council still has the option of adopting it as the flag that we fly outside, or adopting a new flag. So as you're, you may remember.
Just a question.
Yeah?
Shem, you probably got it, I hope you got it in your future in your presentation, can you put that coat of arms in perspective on a flag with the, with the Town of Cardston badge on it?
We'll talk about that.
Thank you.
So, may recall, the flag is a banner of the arms. So we have our coat of arms, the shield right here. And the flag is essentially that on a rectangular banner.
Don't make it.
So from a vexilological viewpoint, vexilology being the study of flags, they have five basic principles for a design of a good flag. One, keep it simple, which the flag has potential to be, I would say it's a little complex with the way it's currently painted. Use meaningful symbolism. Everything in our flag is hugely symbolic, the wagon wheel representing Charles Card and last wagon train coming north to settle Cardston, the white billets representing all of the surrounding towns being fed by irrigation canals dug by Charles Card and the early pioneers, which is represented by that blue oral, and then the gold representing the, you know, the crops, the rich farmland that the pioneers in Cardston were able to produce. Use two or three basic colors, which just can be reduced to this current painting, there's multiple shades of blue, and we've got the blacks border around the billets. No lettering of seals, which this one accomplishes, and distinctive or related, so it's obviously very distinctive. Where it's lacking is just in keeping it simple, or using two or three basic colors from the standard color set, and I included the Olympic flag there, because Olympic flag was made with the standard color set, specifically to represent all the flags of the world. So those are the basic colors there. So my recommendation for this flag, if council wants to adopt this flag for regular use, would just to be, take the existing design and simplify it. It's only three colors, simple, elegant, and can go on a flag pretty easily. This is the, this aspect ratio is a two-by-three aspect ratio, which is the most common flag shape in the world, most flags in the world adopt this shape. But in Canada, we follow this tradition of the British, so our flag, the Canada flag is a one-two size. So I personally like the smaller aspect ratio, just for the design, the larger one has more blank space, but just to keep things uniform, might be better to use the larger flag. Okay, so back to the Cardston flag. So council, this, the symbolism in this flag has been well established, the temple and Chief Mountain, and this is a pretty recognizable emblem. The, from a vexilological viewpoint, you know, it's not very simple because of the complex drawing of the temple and the carriage and horses. Meaningful, temple's very meaningful for people in Cardston, Chief Mountain, very meaningful, carriage represents Carriage Museum and just the culture in Cardston. This design uses four colors, so close to the two or three basic color, colors. It does use lettering. And it's fairly distinctive, but I would say it's also very related to a lot of other emblems in the area. Chief Mountain seems to be an emblem that connects a lot of organizations in the surrounding area. So my recommendation for our flag would be, first of all, it's, it's a seal on a white flag, so I would take it, make it a flag. Next, does have writing on the flag, which doesn't work when you're seeing the flag from the opposite side. So I'd recommend taking that off. That produces a bit of blank space, so change proportions of some of the artwork. Now, the temple and the carriage are the focal point, and I'd say that you could, it could be drawn a little better. So update the artwork. We're still four colors, you could easily reduce that to one color, save on production costs and just printing costs. And then, one last recommendation I might make, the introduction of the carriage in the town emblem or logo appears to have happened around the same time the Carriage Museum was introduced to town. And at the time, the, the hope, I think, was that the Carriage Museum was going to make Cardston a destination tourist location, when people would travel here from all over the place to come see the, the Carriage Museum. I don't know that that's necessarily happened, so the, just to further simplify the flag, I would further simplify it by removing the carriage and horses, and make the emphasis beyond on the temple. So something like this, it's more in line with the five principles as laid out by the Vexilological Society. And they do say that there are exceptions to all of the rules, like, for example, the temple. It's still somewhat of a complex drawing, but it is the most identifiable feature in the town. So I think this, something like this, it's, you're not going to mistake what town this flag is associated with. So those are my two recommendations for town flag for you, for council. You have, it's your prerogative to decide whether or not you want to update the flag design, if you want to keep the current flag, and we just print more of the existing flag, bearing in mind that it's the town logo, which has changed over, over the years, and may change again, and if it changes in the future, do you want to keep the existing flag, or do you want to update the flag to have the new logo on it? Or do you want to adopt the heraldic flag, which will endure forever in the Registry of Arms, Flags and Badges with the Canadian Government? That will always be a symbol associated with the Town of Cardston? Or do you want to adopt a new design? Updated design, or entertain maybe having a artwork contest, have someone design a new updated flag design? If you've been using the current flag for maybe 15 to 20 years, some of the councils present may have a better idea of how long we've been using this flag, or may recall other flags that we've used in the past. So that's the question which I have for you, just, do you want to maintain status quo?
Thank you for that presentation, appreciate that information. We want to discuss, everybody has an opinion, so let's just, go ahead, mayor.
No, I just wanted to say, the logo that we have today was designed according to what I got from I got from information by Howard at the Remington Center. He is the one who created that logo. And I spoke with him and he confirmed that. So that was his original design. And when you said that it was linked with Remington, yes, absolutely.
Councillor Court and then councillor.
Okay, I understand the symbolism of that top flag, but it's McGrath colors, so I don't like it.
Amen.
I did like the lower one with the, with the carriage on it, quite frankly. The bottom one with the carriage, I thought looked just fine, in my opinion. Yeah, I don't see a problem with that one.
I like that one. I don't like the yellow one. I love McGrath, I love the people, but I don't like their colors for that, for our town. It's their, it's their colors. And I had a problem with the wagon wheel. I kept on seeing a cannon. I'm sorry, but that's what I kept on seeing, was a cannon in my mind. And it just, that bothered me, you know? But I like this because that symbolizes, in my opinion, what our town is all about. We have that Chief Mountain in the background, we have the temple and the Remington Center, which is a tourist destination here. That's, to me, is Cardston. I would really, well, I guess Chief Mountain in a way represents the reserve too, because that's their sacred mountain, right? And I just want to make sure that they're not excluded in that. So I prefer this. I kind of like the Cardston on there, but I can see this just without it, I like this.
Councillor Bingley.
I agree with councillor Court and councillor Barnes, that this is, this is, this is a flag for Cardston. But if we were to change the blues, what color would you go to? The golds?
Oh, no.
Change blues?
They're fine.
For this flag, I would use blue. In the heraldic flag, gold was the color granted to us to represent productive farmland from the irrigation canals.
And you say they should have three to four colors?
Two to three is recommended, but like I mentioned before, every rule can be broken if it fits.
So if you put the gold from the, from the temple bottom down and put the brown wagon in, in the middle of the gold?
Then you've got five colors.
So what?
That increases costs.
There are no rules, right?
I've just, I've just said, you, you want something that stands out.
I think this, I think this stands out by itself. I mean, the temple's pretty prominent, you've got the skyline.
There, there we go.
But let me smite my face. Everybody in town and not temple-related.
No, but everybody in town recognizes that the temple's in the middle of town.
I know it's a focal point, and that's why we need to have the Remington carriage thing in there also.
So councillor Silk, then councillor Brown.
So to simplify this process, we have Shem put it out on the website with some brief explanation and get some feedback from the public so that the seven of us aren't making a decision that the rest of the town's going to hate.
You can do that. The website does allow for polling.
And we can pull that, right?
Yeah, we haven't used the polling feature on our website yet.
We could do that.
We could use it for this.
Sure. Councillor Brown.
So I like the old flag. I am aware that it says Town of Cardston on it. As you're driving into Cardston, odds are good you know where you're driving, so you know what it says. But I do like it on there. I do understand you can't see it on both sides. If I had to choose, I, I prefer this one for sure. But I do like the original one because it's something we're known for. I don't think very many people look at it and think, oh, now that's got too many colors or, you know, I, I didn't even know the word that you used, heraldic. I had no idea what that even meant and I probably butchered it. But I also appreciate all your work you went into this. It's fantastic. But I'm all about on here where it says council may choose to consult with the public on the new flag if they decide. I think that's the right answer. I think it's good. And, you know, we may only get four people that are online that choose to give us their opinion, but, I mean, we've kind of heard from council, it sounds like, the way we're leaning, but there's nothing wrong with putting it out to the public and just seeing what their thought is. Put it in the newspaper, asking them to let us know, have a timeframe, and then within that timeframe, we'll bring it back to council and hear the needs of the people and make the decision I think is reasonable.
Councillor Barnes.
One of the things that I've kind of been wondering about for some time since we've got our heraldic emblem now, where are we using it? I don't see it around much. I mean, we went to a lot of expense to do that, and I'm trying to figure out where's the protocol for using it to get it in the public eye so that they recognize it too. I think we need to do that somehow.
I actually spoke with municipal affairs today about.
Pardon me?
I actually spoke with municipal affairs today about that.
Yeah?
And as I mentioned, there's no, there's no legislation surrounding emblems or flags, with the exception of the town seal, whatever you decide the town seal is going to be, has to be kept in the
Right.
Under, well, kept secure. But for use of emblems, council gets to decide that by way of policy or bylaw. So whatever you choose to adopt, whatever you choose to use, you get to decide how it's used. So currently, we've been using the coat of arms on the legislative, the governance side of things for
Letterhead.
Policies, bylaws, yeah, we can produce letterheads. We did make some new swag pens and magnets with a digitized version of the coat of arms on it for council to distribute. I would be curious to know how council would like to use the official flag, the heraldic flag, if they want to use it just as a ceremonial flag for council purposes, or if you just want to let it sit in the registry. Future council can decide how they want to make use of it, if they want to make use of it. It is there, it is an honor bestowed on the Town of Cardston by the Canadian Crown. So it's kind of an honor that you would like to show.
Yeah. Where I'm coming from is that, I understand it's an honor, but it's an honor that we also paid for, and we spent a lot of money. And so I think we need to show it, I, I think it needs to be more than just on the letterhead. I think somehow our public in our town needs to be familiarized with that coat of arms so that they can own it. Because that's, that was what I thought the whole purpose of that was to be, and I think that we need to. Maybe we can put it out on the electronic board so that it pops up every once in a while intermittently with the other advertising that's, that's out there too, and keep it out there. But I think it needs to get into the public's mind, that that's part of our Cardston honor that we have bestowed on us.
A lot of other municipalities will hang it in their council chambers or
That would be good.
That's what I was wanting. Thank you. We have this flag, which is really our logo at this point. We use it as a logo. But I really think if we had a flag that represent that heraldic, heraldic flag, at least there, whichever the proper setting is, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I just want to designate councillor Barnes to explain the heraldic badge and flag to every citizen who happens. That is.
Me again?
So I just want to designate you to explain to the citizens what the heraldic badge and flag mean. So when they phone me and say, what is that? And I say, yeah, councillor Barnes, he knows all about it.
Here's his full number.
Councillor Brown.
Isn't it on our website, though? It seems like I've looked it up and you've written it. This color represents this, this color represents that. We already have it on there.
And all of that is on
Because I've seen it.
Yeah, it's, it's
Yeah, it's there.
But all of that is on the the registry as well. If you Google Cardston coat of arms, you go to the registry, the public registry of arms. And the blazon, the heraldic language there describing the coat of arms is there, the explanation for all of the elements is there.
Councillor Brown.
But I don't think anybody's going to do that.
No, but I can
Learn to have it on our website.
I can do another post.
Yeah.
When we first published it, we put a post on the
Because I know I've seen it on there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It got quite a few views when we first posted it.
Yeah.
So takeaway from this discussion, Shem's going to put it online. We're going to poll a couple of different flags.
See if there's an appetite to update the flag.
And then can we do our other flags for here, as the mayor suggested? Is that something that can be done?
Do you want to use the heraldic emblems for ceremonial
Are you comfortable with that, councillor?
Yeah, absolutely. It'd be great.
Okay, yeah. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have some minutes to adopt from June the 2nd, 2002 CCW meeting. Any questions, any changes? All in favor? Thank you. So under number six, we have the urban renewal policy. Jeff, do you want to speak to that?
Please? I just wanted a little bit of, that's distracting. I just want a little bit of feedback on our urban renewal policy. The policy for particularly residential says that new construction is required to replace the existing home, either with the same type as is removed or any other type of single-family dwelling, as long as it meets the criteria of the land use bylaw. We've recently had two inquiries on lots that are empty, that maybe back in the day, the 60s, the 70s, might have had a home on them. So it's been, you know, and no one's recent collective memory about the property, but it, you know, they're infill lots that are now vacant, where someone would like to build on them, and requesting if they would qualify for urban renewal, even though right now as we stand, there's no improvement on the property at all. It's empty. But it, it appears that there was once a utility connection to the property, and so it would stand to reason. There was an improvement there at one time, and I couldn't speak as to why it was demolished or what the story with, I, I just don't know the genesis of the property. So I wanted to have a little discussion with you tonight about what your thoughts are on the intent of urban renewal, which is to motivate gentrification of older lots or older areas. And then if you feel it's reasonable that that would apply to what are vacant lots but likely had a improvement on them at some time.
Councillor Court.
So what are they asking for, these people? If the lot's empty, what are they?
Sure. So what the policy allows for is that we would go in and replace, well, pending a condition assessment, but given the age, it probably would need replaced. That the town would go in and replace the utility lines and any corresponding sidewalk, curb and gutter and asphalt as part of that replacement. So there is quite a value there. Once you start replacing sidewalk and curb and gutter and asphalt and everything, there's quite a cost. And those, some of you may recall that we changed this policy from what, it used to be cash. It used to be $10,000 at the demolition of the old home and $10,000 at the reconstruction of a new property. The problem is we had a bunch of, well, I shouldn't say a bunch, we had a few new homes going in over top of a really old utility infrastructure. Because the builder of the day, whether it was contracted or self-built, didn't want to spend the money to replace the service lines. So we were going in later on new asphalt, new sidewalk, they'd, maybe they had ground down or we'd replaced the curb and gutter where they had their new driveway, and we were digging all this up because we had a brand-new home on a clay tile sewer line that would collapse and fail. So the discussion of the day was, well, instead of offering cash, why don't we offer to replace those utilities at our cost? So that they connect to new utility and we don't have to dig up later. So that's where it changed. But we hadn't considered, we hadn't contemplated this idea of infill lots which are currently vacant and have been for some time, then applying for the program. So I, I'm not really sure where I land on it, to be honest, but it's an interesting discussion.
Can you turn that light on for me again?
I'm going to go back 40 years ago. I had a property on the west end of town. My neighbor bought from me, and he offered me a price for it, so I accepted. And then after he purchased it, I found out that he got the urban renewal, urban renewal grant money, he got $19,500 from the town to tear down my house, and he did nothing with it, he just tore it down, right? And he got that money, that was cash that was given to him and bought my property. And nothing to this day has been done with that property. It still stands the way it was after it was torn down. I, I have a difficult time after so many years with somebody coming back and saying that they would like to buy that lot, and now they want to collect some urban renewal to build on that lot. I think that's asking a lot, personally. If you buy a town lot, you pay whatever it is for the town lot, and you don't get urban renewal for them. There's curbs and gutters and sewer and water, you know, down in Scalville, it's all ready to go. I find it difficult in my mind for somebody to come and say, well, because the lot's been empty for a long time, that I want the urban renewal on that to, you know, to build a house on it. I, I just don't, I don't get it. Honestly, I don't get it.
Councillor Bingley, thanks.
Two parts. Because I'm old as dirt and lived here that long, I can probably go around this town and, and tell you where all those infill lots are and who used to own and live there, such as this one two-thirds way up the hill here, used to belong by the Haslins. And I don't know if the services are still over to that property or not, but there was a little house up there that, I, I went up there quite a bit when I was a kid, because I lived down behind the high school. But council, at one time that I sat on, we offered those vacant properties at a premium. I think councillor Barnes, he wasn't on council, but we asked the realtors to try to sell those, and we give them at a, at a very discounted price to try to move them before we started any new development. Is that still there available to our realtors to sell those properties at a reduced price? Get them to move them?
We're not sitting on inventory of infill lots. The town isn't owning any of them.
These are private owned lots.
Yeah, privately owned lots. We can find out, you know, we have the ability to go back and find out if there was ever a home there, but I guess the question is, is there, is there a threshold?
What's the location? I can tell you.
Well, and again, I assume
In the past 45 years anyways.
We know if there was water and sewer there, because we can find that. We can, we can camera the sewer line and say, oh, there's a connection that goes to that lot, for example.
So, oh, sorry, Jeff.
No, I'm done.
I just have a question before everybody else. So in talking about urban renewal policy, my understanding when I sat on the board years ago was that was, there was an old house that needed to be removed, and that was an incentive for somebody to build something new so that we could get rid of that old dilapidated house. And I don't know, in my own opinion, I don't know that a, a lot that's sitting there that maybe used to have a house 40 years ago qualifies for that in the bylaw. But anyways, that's just my opinion. Councillor Bingley.
So Jeff, when we redo a road, we do all the infrastructure under that road, if there is a vacant lot, do we not put new infrastructure over to the curb?
Most likely, yeah, probably.
So we do do that?
Yeah, yeah.
Councillor Silk, and then the mayor.
I think from a purely philosophical point of view, if we make a fairly modest investment in some infrastructure and we have a new house placed on an empty lot, isn't that an advantage to the Town of Cardston?
Absolutely.
It's interesting because I just had put some note regarding strategic planning, and that was something that was in my mind, is the infill in our town. Isn't that something that we should be looking at? I mean, I understand the cost, I understand councillor Barnes' personal point of view, but I also think if we have a urban, urban renewal policy, that there was a house there or not, should it still apply? That's the question, actually.
Well, and the other piece, sorry, the other piece is, is that if we have a lot that a new house is on, then we're going to collect those taxes, right? If it sits dormant and we're not doing anything with it, that's the other case.
My point is, mayor, that if that house is torn down under the old policy, that My point is, Mayor, that if that house is torn down under the old policy, that the money has already been spent. There is no more new money, and that's going to come out in new money from taxes. And that money originally, if I understood it, was urban renewal money that came from the provincial government to the communities. It was.
That I don't know.
That was, that was the, the original
Yeah, I don't know.
thing about it. And there was up to a $20,000 grant given. And many people, there were probably 100 homes or more that were torn down in Cartston. And every single one of those people got either 19 or 18 or $20,000, all of them. I know a guy, and he called me up because he was really upset because I revealed it to the potential buyer, that he had a garage on the lot, and that, that lot had, at one time had a, had a garage on it. He got $12,500 to tear down a dilapidated old garage that had no services. And I got reamed out by that gentleman, and I had to remind him, well, you took advantage of a problem, of a program. That wasn't fair that you did that. And it's public information. Why are you going to chew me out for sharing public information? I said, you got $12,000 gift. And that, to me, was against the principle of the whole urban renewal thing. So I'm just saying, if that, you go back in the records, you'll find something in there. Because they changed, they changed the policy about 20 years ago, if I remember, that no longer were they going to get that money upfront. They were going to get half to tear it down and half when they got the house built. So anything 20 years going backwards, they've already been paid out. That money's been paid out by the town. And I would not suggest that we give anybody any more money because that urban renewal money was already paid to the previous owner. And I don't think it's fair to come back and ask, if you tell them to go back to the previous owner and see if they'll give it to them. Because they didn't do anything with it, except kept it and spent it.
Counselor Selk, Counselor Brown, Counselor Court.
So Jeff, how many people have dipped into the urban renewal policy fund that we have currently?
So the utility-based fund?
Yeah.
Because we've maybe only done one or two. It hasn't been
How long?
Four years.
Yes, that's about it.
Four or five years?
Years ago?
Hmm.
Or in the last?
No, in the last.
Four years.
We haven't seen a lot of them. We haven't seen a lot of uptake on it. We saw more, and I try and remember this as best I can. We had a lot more interest when there was $10,000 for tear down and $10,000 for rebuild. But what we were finding was, as we were visiting with those people, it actually wasn't affecting their decision. It wasn't a catalyst for a rebuild. It wasn't a catalyst to put a new home on the place. It was a bonus. It was nice.
Yeah.
But it wasn't actually affecting the purchasing decision. And then more often than not, if they had a third party build the home, especially if it was built on spec, that wasn't being reflected in the, in the sale price of the home either. So it was additional margin for the contractor, but it wasn't benefiting the homeowner. And then they bought a house on old utilities.
So additional, additional question if I might, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
So then Jeff, is it possible that some of these infill lots weren't subject to urban renewal? Because it's been ancient history, and the how, and the lot's just been there for vacant for 20-plus years?
Could be. Yeah. Like I said, I, we could definitely find, we can always identify if there was an improvement on it. That's reasonably easy to find, I think. But whether they were subject to a program previously, that's tougher.
I just think that us hammering this issue when there's a possibility that someone could be building a home on a vacant lot, there's a philosophical conversation there that should be, we should do everything we can to encourage new building in this town.
So is it, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Can I just ask, just because you're gonna, I know where you're gonna go with it.
You're the chairman, you can do whatever you want.
I just wanted to ask, so Counselor Barnes talked about provincial monies that were given for urban renewal. Is that provincial money still there? Or is that utility money is what the town is paying when somebody comes in to do that, right?
Yeah, I was never aware that it was a provincially sponsored program. I, in my 12 years, I've only ever known it as a municipally sponsored program.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that there was no provincial money that holds us to some agreement. Sorry.
There is not.
My question is brief. It's just, what are other, other communities doing?
Uh, we haven't looked at that recently for a while. I don't think there's, these urban renewal type programs, I don't think are terribly common. We could certainly look at that, but I'm not, I'm not aware of what they're doing.
The reason I say that is because I know of, I won't say where, but other communities where I have family living, where the complaint is always in these smaller communities, that these old dilapidated houses, or they're not getting removed and new ones being put in. And for me, as a business owner, I'm thinking, we're going to make more taxes on a brand-new house than we are for a little 800 square foot chicken coop, right? So I just think there's, there's, financially for the town, it would be an incentive.
Yeah, whether we go with this or not, I think Counselor Barnes has some legitimate complaints. We give them the go-ahead, and then they do nothing with it but turn around and sell it. Also, my dusty old cobwebs back here, I seem to remember that there was a limit of like two or three houses a year. We didn't just throw it wide open.
We budgeted a certain amount we could afford every year, and then we capped it at that. Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't have a problem with this because it is taxed on a new house. I do like the idea that you put new infrastructure under there. I wouldn't necessarily give them the whole amount, maybe half, just to encourage them to do it properly. But, yeah, we need to be careful that they're not just taking advantage and pocketing and walking away.
There's lots of lots available in town. For them, so for somebody to come and target those specific lots, I think, I don't know. Sure, they, I'd love to be able to get a little bit of a bonus too to help me build on a house. But they, they're not limited to those lots. There's lots of lots for town. They can build, and we'll get taxes on the house regardless, in my opinion. But I, I'm telling you, I know about the renewal program. I was the managing editor of the Cartston Paper. I worked for the Cartston Paper for nine years. I reported at council meetings for six years. And I was here in the council meetings when this program came out. So I know what I'm talking about when I say there was a lot of money given out. And there was a lot of people that took advantage of it by building new houses. And I know quite a few people that got the money and tore the house down and didn't do nothing with it.
Counselor Selk.
I don't think we should be using taxpayers' money to do that.
Okay. First of all, there was an old urban renewal policy that offered $10,000 and $10,000. That policy doesn't exist anymore. We're talking about a modest investment on the part of the town to put infrastructure in place for a new build that's going to actually beautify the infill lot as opposed to having a vacant lot. And they're not going to get any money. They're not going to get anything until they're actually putting, oh, I know, a foundation in the ground.
So Jeff, can I just ask a question? With, with the utilities that we're running, there's no money exchanged? There's no money given to the owner who's going to build a new house?
We're just covering the costs.
You're just covering the costs of that, so there's no
Asphalt, curb, gutter, and utility.
At the town's cost, right?
At the town's cost, correct. And we have in there also with electrical, if it has the ability to go underground, we would look at, at that too.
And that's capped at whatever we budget? Did we budget for that last year?
Again, it's just, it's just included within our labor and machine time because it's not a cash expense.
Okay.
Right? It's something we do as we can. So I think if, if what I'm hearing, there seems to be a bit of an appetite to, to allow for the urban renewal program to apply to infill lots where there's evidence that there was at one time a house there. But perhaps we need some evidence they weren't a recipient of funds in the previous program.
That's all I'm saying. I, I'm all for people building on these lots. But if, I'm just saying if, if they've been paid out 20 grand, you know, on those lots already, I'm hesitant to pay any more on them. I, and I understand what you're saying, Counselor Selk. I'd love to see a beautiful home there too. But I don't know. We've got lots of lots.
So do we need to make a decision tonight, or do we want to?
Not necessarily, but we do need to get some, I'd like to bring you a draft if we're going to amend this at all
Yeah.
that we can talk about. And so like I said, I'm hearing that lots that are empty but have service connections at that property could potentially also qualify. Because that would be evidence that there was probably an improvement there at some point. You know, as old as that connection might be, which it likely is. That's why they want the program. We, we've run into trouble in my time here with nice new home, nicely landscaped, new driveway, and then their sewer line collapses because it was clay tile from the 40s. And it was because the builder, whether it was a self-build or not at the time, they didn't want to spend that extra money to put in new services all the way to the, to the main. And so this was kind of thought about that, well, let's avoid digging up new asphalt and landscaping and concrete
Give some bucks.
by doing that early on. So again, it's not a, there's a, there's minimal cash expense. We're buying a couple lengths of pipe. We're buying a few feet of poly waterline, if that's what it is.
$2,000.
But that's minor. The rest is machine time and labor.
Yeah.
While patching up the cement.
Yeah.
So can I make a recommendation
Yeah, I was just gonna ask.
to council to have administration reinforce and improve the urban renewal policy?
Yeah. All in favor of that? Thank you. So Jeff, do you want to stay up there for this other, other business? You might as well just go ahead and talk about the 2002 planning session agenda.
What you have, counsel, and I'd like to spend a bit of time here because I want to make sure we prepare for this meeting correctly. And I'll probably just intro this and then sit down so I can type notes better. What I did is I put a draft agenda in front of you for your planning session meeting, which first of all mimics your strategic priorities. And then at the end, by item four, is additional things that have come up more recently in the last year that probably warrant some additional conversation, such as bill seven, tax incentives, and prohibition, and maybe some things around ARDN. But I would say that'd be a lower priority for the planning session if time doesn't allow. What I would very much like from you as a group is, as we look at these different things, for example, our vagrancy proposal to the MP, where do we want to go with that? Do we want anyone to come to the meeting to help us work through that? Do we need resources compiled before that? Do we want an opinion from someone? I want to be able to prepare as thoroughly as I can. And so I've put many of the items from that plan in here that I have questions around. And to make sure that we can capture everything we need to in the meeting, and I don't leave anything hanging out there. So I'll sit down so that I can type. But Mr. Chairman, if we could kind of go through that and get some feedback from the group, I would appreciate that.
I just need to find it.
Well, I
Yeah, go ahead. I'm just looking for it. Go ahead.
The vagrancy, as we know in our town, has been an issue that has been worrisome for council for many, many years. I've been on council nine years, 10 years. And that has not gone away and is not going to go away. So I appreciate that we are going to send a proposal to MP Motts. But I also realize that, as you mentioned there, we need partners. And one of the partner we need is the Blood Tribe, maybe the FCSS from the Blood Tribe, or the Marcel who looks after that. But there is an election coming up, and I really don't know that that's going to be the right timing for us to get result, to get resources from the Blood Tribe. And that's a little bit concerning for me because that's an issue where we need some dialogue.
When is their election?
November.
Is this going?
Yes.
Are these every three years there?
Their member, their mandate is three years, ours is four. And they kept theirs at three. So I really concerned that winter comes, and there comes a trouble again for those people who are on the street because they cannot stay in a shelter. It doesn't seem to be a very human treatment. But there is nothing, there is no alternative right now, as far as I can see, to give them a place to meet. So I'm not so sure how we handle that issue, which is definitely a greater issue in the winter than in the spring and in the summer.
Counselor Brown.
So it's my understanding that, Jeff, when we went to the Rotarians and we spoke, they talked about, they had a constable, I can't remember his name.
Bennett.
Bennett, that's right.
Jim.
Jim Bennett. He came and talked to them in regards to these shelters that they have just put in behind
Yes.
the kitchen. And that that was going to be given to the people pending they, you know, lived up to these, you know, they can't have this, they can't have that. But that that was their way of giving them, the homeless people, a safe place to sleep. And so is that, that's open, is my understanding, is it not?
I think it's in, it's happening.
Yeah, that was my understanding. So
It's meant for six people?
I, I don't know off the top of my head what the count was.
One.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I know the goal was they were, they got funding for X amount, and then they were, they were trying to see how that was going to work, and their hope was to build more. And their, their request to the Cartston Rotarians were, could they work in partnership with them and that kind of thing. So, which is pretty amazing, and I hugely support. But I'm hoping that that would help with, but I mean, that's not FCSS funding, or that's not, you know. I absolutely support the idea that Blood Tribe needs to be involved with this, absolutely, on whatever level.
And
It's a dialogue.
Community clubs may need to be involved there too, because those are the partnerships we need to form in order to solve some of those issues.
Could it not also be health? Like, could it not be mental health, Alberta Health? Like, this is, you know what I mean? Like, if we're looking at helping, we're not, we're not looking at brushing them away. We're looking at the help. So if we're looking at helping people that need help.
As the addiction issue.
Right? Like
And the good thing is there are beds coming for addiction recovery.
Yes, yes.
75? Is that what it is, Jeff? 75? Is that Yeah.
Where are those beds going to go?
Standoff. So I'm hoping that if we were to work together, maybe there would be a door opening to try solving some of those issues.
Counselor Selk, and then Counselor Court.
Seems to me that when we sent this proposal, or when we had our conversation with MP Motts, he gave us a standard government explanation, why nothing's going to happen. But we've never actually drug him back here and held his feet to the fire. And we've never actually drug him back here several times to hold his feet to the fire, to tell him, you need to help this problem. You need to help at a federal level rather than just trying to put it in a closet and pretend like it doesn't exist. You need to do your job because that's what you're getting paid for.
That echoes that. I was just gonna say, this is kind of a federal responsibility
It is.
to a large degree. And, yeah, we seem like we're dumping on AHS and the provinces taking it over. But where's the federal government on all of this? This is their responsibility.
Yeah.
So I agree with you on that.
Counselor Bengey.
About two years ago, I sat in a meeting right here. We had a roundtable discussion, and there must have been 30 people in this room. And this is exactly what we were addressing. Whatever happened to that discussion? Whatever happened to the proposals that were made at that meeting?
Mayor.
If you recall, MP Motts went and tried to have a barbecue on the front of the administration building, and standoff was not well received. And it stopped at that level.
Jeff.
So I recognize that when we talk about working with the Blood Tribe, the election complicates it, for sure, because we don't know which councils are assigned to which agencies post-election. So I've been, I've been thinking about this and wondering if we see benefit in inviting Mr. Fox from community development, for example. He is the manager of community development, at least to maybe say. So I throw this out, I don't mean to lead council down this, but for example, if the town, through our, through our partners, for example, our clubs and agencies, could, could help fund X amount, could the shelter be open longer and enhance their services, for example? Because maybe for them, it's a $10,000 touch, that it, that opens up some opportunities. But we don't know that. But we don't know that.
Exactly.
We don't know that right now. Um, and it's the same thing if we want to look at the Friendship Center idea, which would be a little bit different than what we proposed to the MP, but similar. You, I hate to tell you, can't be the one to initiate it.
No, it has to be a person.
Communities initiate it.
Yeah, exactly.
We know that the, the administration will be consistent through the election, but we also have, uh, good friends on Chief and Counsel now, like Counselor Weaselhead, Counselor Marcel, who is the Council on Community Development. I don't even know if he's running again and it's not appropriate for me to ask, but I, I'm just curious if you want any of those stakeholders to potentially attend for a half an hour to, to ask those types of questions.
Good idea, Counselor Brown.
I love that idea.
Yeah, I do too.
And I also would add to it, what about Dr. Esther Tailfeathers being there? Because she is hugely looked up to in, in, on the Blood Tribe. And with her medical background and her history, and she's a huge supporter of helping, I, I think she would be a great person to have at that table as well. That's my personal opinion.
We, we have some, some friends within HELP, such as Charlie Weaselhead, who is not an elected official, but is, pointed to that board, uh, who has told us he would come and, and also work with us on that as well. So that might be a good combination of, of someone from HELP. Dr. Tailfeathers is so darn busy. She's really tough to get for that stuff.
I know, but she's fabulous.
She's great. No debate there. So would you be interested in me talking with either Tia Fox, who directs F-CSS, or is it, it's Arnold? Arnold Fox from Community Development?
Right.
Who, who, again, excellent gentleman to, to work with. Um, potentially Dr. Tailfeathers or Charlie Weaselhead from HELP, or Derek Fox, potentially from HELP, who would also be excellent to work with. Mayor, I've got to know him quite well.
Yeah.
Over the last couple of years.
Who's, what's his name?
Derek Fox?
Derek?
Yeah.
Very nice gentleman.
He'll ever meet you in your entire life.
So is counsel comfortable with that? Everybody's okay with that?
That some of the stakeholders that we work with?
Okay, good.
Okay, um, what about Mr. Motts?
Yeah, okay, I was gonna say, before we move on, I don't want this put in the closet again. I want Mr. Motts back here to answer some questions. He needs to do something for this end of the constituency for a change.
There's probably a pretty good chance that they'll be going to a fall election as well.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true.
He, he may not yet be available.
That's fine.
I will see if I can get us, um.
We've got a year.
I will work to get some delegations from HELP, Community Development, to that section of our planning session.
I'm pretty sure Mr. Motts won't be able to make it in September. Parliament opens on the twenty, opens on the twenty-first of September.
The day before. For the first time in five months, yeah.
And it, and it may be a non-confidence, but the, the same day. Yeah, he won't be available.
Could we Skype him in? Or do something like that so that at least he's?
We have a year.
Yeah.
He'll be in Ottawa.
Well, it doesn't, sorry.
Go ahead, Mayor.
It doesn't change the, the fact that we can still have contact with all those other ones. And as Counselors say, Counselor, uh, MP Motts can always come later on. And maybe he could come with some money would be even better.
And maybe our proposal is amended post-planning session.
Exactly.
We represent to the MP.
Yep.
Sure. Yeah. So do you want to?
So I.
Do you want to carry through?
Yeah. Pleasing priorities, this has been something where we, um, if there's no major issues, I'm sure, uh, Sergeant Wright would be happy to come and talk about that. He does speak to the policing committee. In fact, now that he's settled, we need to have another meeting there soon. It's been a few months, I think. Well, we haven't met in COVID a couple of times, so it's maybe been three months or something, it's probably about time. I just was curious if you would like to have a section between where the peace officer and Sergeant Wright are here and we talk about our approach to enforcement, particularly in the downtown. That, that would be easy to arrange, I think. So I just wanted to see if you'd be interested in having them attend as well. Where we're doing this here, we can all send out delegations there.
Yeah, I'd see.
I think so, yeah, Counselor Court.
I'd be interested in having Joseph Scowler tell us where that money's going that we're putting out for the extra peace officers we're supposed to be getting. I'd be very interested to see where that three hundred thousand dollars is going. And are we going to see anybody different? Are we just paying an extra tax to the government?
I think Jeff has an opinion.
I don't like to be that guy, Counselor. Actually, send out, it's in Tanya's newsletter, I think, actually.
Yes.
Yeah.
Where she talks about, here's where all these towns that are getting some of the hands policing. We're a hundred miles from the nearest town, I hate to tell you. This isn't something that, uh, and by the way, we're gonna compound your frustration with that. We talked about the new assessment model, so our costs are gonna be a little bit. So we'll talk about that.
You're paid twice as much.
Again. So, but it is reasonable though. I don't know what the legislature sessions are, but if, if the MLA is here when we talk about some of these, maybe it would be to his advantage to come sit in and periodically use her all day as well. I can present him with an agenda.
I have an alternative idea, Mr. Chairman. When we're done venting during this planning session, then have him come, because then we'll be in a really good mood.
Should I come as a concluding speaker or what would you?
Sure. Or the next week in council.
Is it interesting to have Sergeant Wright and a peace officer attend for a half an hour or something?
I think so, I think that's a good idea.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is this meeting in lieu of our second council meeting?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's the whole day, same day, but the whole day.
Yeah.
What time?
Uh, we need to determine that, by the way. Normally we go eight AM.
Yeah.
Like, perhaps Counselor Court's style.
I'll just sleep here the night before.
Okay, all right, we'll send.
I, I do have more, one more thing on this, we maybe need to discuss.
Go ahead.
We maybe need to discuss if we can actually afford a peace officer. With our increasing cost up to three hundred thousand, he's costing us a hundred thousand. We maybe need to have a, a real look at that one. I, I hate, don't want to pull any more policing off, but there's a lot of money at stake here, so.
Counselor Barnes.
Just a recommendation for lunch, the mayor would like to bring us lasagna.
Oh, you took it in there? Okay.
Counselor Silk, go ahead.
Okay, I'm confused because the second meeting of this month is on the eighth and this is on the twenty-second.
Your second council meeting.
Second council meeting, yeah.
Yeah, the twenty-second.
Twenty-second is that, that meeting.
Yeah, so in your organizational meeting, we canceled that regular meeting of council because we thought we'd be in Calgary.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, so we'll call, uh, we'll advertise that you're having a meeting, but it's your annual planning session.
Yeah. Is that open to public or no?
So that, yes, is the short answer.
Okay.
But you, many of these items, if there are public in attendance, you would have discretion to go to closed session.
Okay.
So I will, because we're home, because we're here, I'll, I'll make that noted in the agenda. That if, if we're concerned about that, we can go to closed session.
I think we should meet in Badger Valley, don't have to worry about that.
Am I leaving? Okay, so I've got policing, Sergeant Wright, thank you.
Yep.
Under, uh, well, we'll talk about bylaw with the CPO here, under recreation, I thought it would be good for us to have a, what was it? Did you say yes? Okay. I thought one, um, by that point in time, we will have concluded interviews on the golf course manager position. As an aside, Counselor Court and two of the committee members, and JD and I start that tomorrow. So we have three interviews tomorrow and two on Thursday. So I thought we may want to just sit down and look at that whole picture because, well, we're gonna have some discussion next week about it, probably when we talk about that stimulus funding. If the Gulf or should be a recipient of it or not, we'll have some discussion there. But I thought we could talk about the current financial position because our season will be largely wrapped up by then. What we need for capital? What we should do with investments like hole sixteen and clubhouse? And, and then we can speak more to the management philosophy because we'll have done some interviews by then. And this isn't one that I'm scrambling to award right away because it won't start until next February anyway. But we can have some good discussion about that. So my, my thought here was, are we at a point with this clubhouse? Do we want someone, for example, like Mr. Beazer to attend on behalf of putting concrete plans in place for a clubhouse for a certain year? Do we want him to attend for fifteen, twenty minutes and talk about, is this happening or not?
Yeah, so, yes.
Yeah, I totally agree.
Next.
Okay, so any theme on golf course or any one else, I should say, what I'll make sure is you have the designs for hole sixteen. We will do as close of a complete financial statement as we can on the year, although we'll still have probably three weeks of shutting down and doing some work, unless it's like last year, we're under four feet of snow. So then we'd be down.
That'd be a week from now.
And then, uh, we'll try and have our capital plans for the upcoming year already determined and the loans, and I'll try and make sure all that's there. But I'll get Mr. Beazer to attend for a short time, yeah.
Go ahead, Mayor.
I also would really like to know, I mean, it presented us different kind of idea of the stage for a clubhouse. But I would really like to know if they have any beginning of gathering finance, finances in order to give us a sense what kind of clubhouse we're looking for, uh, at. Is that one that would allow for recreation facility within? Or strictly a small gathering, a facility, uh, that could not be a wedding, cannot, could not be anything of that sort? So I think we need to understand that a little bit better because I have some further idea down the line on activities in the winter and something that I would like to talk about later on in another meeting.
Well, which will tie into actually part C if I, or part three, sorry, C, part three, if I jump there quite quickly. This indoor recreation facility has stalled due to COVID and while we're not out of the pandemic by any means, we, we seem to be trying to return to some of that activity. So the question is, I wanted to have a conversation, how do we restart community consultation? Aren't the scope and scale still the same? Have we had any sober second thoughts on that? Are there third parties that we want to attend to discuss this right now? And I don't know that we, we need that right now, uh, that's up to you totally, but I just threw that out there. Um, so I, we can have a lot of that discussion at the same time.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because I really think there are some ideas that need to be explored also for better understanding.
I also think it would be good if possible, I mean, you were talking about having, um, Joseph Scow, who represents us as our MLA. He would be good to be a part of this rec conversation, if only he's sitting and listening to, he lives in this community. I think he would be a great person to have here because I know he's a huge supporter of rec within this community. But when I say huge supporter, I really want it more of a financial than just be here. So anyway, I think it would be great. That's not what I'm looking for, yeah. So I, I just think it'd be great to have him here.
Counselor Silk.
So Jeff, for that whole, you have indoor recreation, can we just broaden that to say recreation?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
We have a private citizen who wants to make a donation to, uh,
Yeah.
a pickleball complex of some kind. And, uh, there's some other elements to that whole recreation piece.
Yeah, so that actually ties in a bit, and I wanted to ask, I was thinking about this more recently, on the Westwind School Division. We, we can have some discussion, I, I can't get feedback on the conclusion of that agreement yet. But I guess what I was wondering on this, maybe more than anything for the planning session, we, we can just go over the status of the agreement and things, but is there anything from a partnership perspective we want to explore at this meeting that we would like, for example, Peter Wright in the room? So do we, do we want to entertain, do we want their partnership, for example, in an indoor facility? Do we want to entertain the EJ Wood Hill?
Yeah.
Idea that came about, do we want them at the table for that? Do we, or do we just save that for, uh, another day when you've had a dis- discussion on maybe the scope and scale?
Counselor Brown and then Counselor Court, sorry.
So I think it would be great, if possible, to meet with Westwind before we have this, to get this wrapped up because we've been talking about doing this for two years now. Get it done, like, like it's at the door, for the love, let's get it done.
Yeah, I, I don't, they've had our draft for.
I know.
Eight, ten months now.
I'm happy to deliver treats and a doorknob if needed.
I will get a meeting with Peter prior to September twenty-second.
Let me know, I'd like to be there.
Counselor Court.
Again, I echo that, I pre-reading to do something with this Lions Park football field facility.
Yeah.
We've been dragging this out forever, they don't have a green space, they're using our green space. They need to contribute to that and they haven't yet, so. They keep saying they've got money for it, but they've never come up with anything.
I don't think they're saying that now.
There is also the EJ Wood, we always talked about it, but it's always been stalled because we're not sure where we're going. So I think sooner or later we need to kind of talk about that.
Yeah, good. Counselor Silk.
Maybe Westwinds can entertain some retroactivity on payments to the town for green space and the use of our facilities, since they've been generous with McGrath and Raymond.
Yes. Yes, they have.
They have.
Counselor Brown.
They gave Raymond over three hundred thousand dollars, so.
Counselor Brown.
Right, Mayor, this is actually a question to you. When you say the EJ, what, what are you, what is it you're exactly saying?
It's because we were looking at, at one time, putting some tennis court there or whatever, the development for recreation.
Right, so when Parks and Rec met, they had essentially shot down that area at the top of the hill of having something up there because they felt that if in fact Westwind School Division, who was all about using it, wasn't willing to come to the table and put any money in it, why would the town be putting forward money for something that they're using? When we have other facilities all over town, you know what I mean? If Westwind wants something at the top of the hill, Westwind can build something at the top of the hill and we'll tax it, essentially.
We can't tax schools.
I'm just saying, we'll figure something out. Charge them for more water or something like that. Stop.
Then the one that came up recently, and it, it came up in relation to, uh, what, oh, it was the, some of the subdivision from the county, was the pathway system. And so I, I went and dug into this a little bit and found some old drawings, some old concepts, and I wondered how thoroughly you wanted to explore this now. And if we want to get stakeholders like Mr. Atkins and Mr. Levitt, Dr. Levitt, at the table to understand if there is actually a desire to set aside land or give it via easement or any of those things to, to do a design sooner than later. Uh, this would obviously involve the county to a large degree, most of this pathway would be in the county. Uh, the bulk of it, if it was a five to ten K pathway, and there is some designs for that too. So my, I was curious if you wanted to have those, those are the two I can think of for now that would be the most relevant, would be Mr. Atkins, Dr. Uh, Levitt, thank you. To see if there is actually a real intent to start, we could actually start on the easement process right away to kind of secure that now and to protect those areas from future development.
Yeah. Counselor Brown.
I would support.
On that as well, I do have another name, but I won't bring it up right now. But I do have another name that could be at that meeting that is wanting, has come to me with ideas of things that we could do along the pathway. And so I think they would be great to have at this meeting as well. I mean, if we're talking about it, let's talk about it, let's get all the cards out on the table, let's see what, because it's like, before you put the concrete down, you need to get the underneath all good to go, right? So let's, let's get everyone at the table so we can speak the same language. So I'll, uh, I just don't want to put the name out before I talk to them.
Mayor.
Regarding the pathway, I kind of was thinking about that. Years back, we had, uh, a citizen of our town that had come. I wanted to see along the pathway some outdoor equipment, kind of put the.
Mrs. Leighton.
Mrs. Leighton. It never kind of came to light, I'm not so sure why she became sick and the project didn't go through.
So it's Mrs. Leighton's sister that originally started that, Miss Bam.
Right.
Bam, yeah, she passed away.
And I'm just wondering if there is in relation with what you're saying, some appetite to kind of revisit that.
Yeah, Mrs. Leighton, uh, applied for a grant subsequently for a number of years, but it never came to fruition, so we just kind of left it. Her intent was to try and get that, that grant, I don't remember the sponsoring.
That was Esther?
Yeah, it was Esther. And, and so we tried that a number of years consecutively, weren't successful, and the grant became a fizzle after that.
Okay, I'll, sorry.
That could be also, uh, a possibility, the, the Rotarians are going to come to visit with you, Jeff, from what I understand, uh, from the president. And there are some, maybe some ideas there for them. They're looking for something that's not going to cost us tons in maintenance. Uh, so there, there, those are possibility that we could maybe entertain them with.
Counselor Bengey.
I, I'd definitely ask Dr. Levitt to be here.
Yeah. A lot of lens.
Definitely. After discussion with him.
Been a bolt this already.
Okay, so we, we're good with that. Intermunicipal relations, what I was thinking on this one is you have a committee who's very. Intermunicipal relations, what I was thinking on this one is you have a committee who's very, very involved in the I C F negotiation. It's not that you aren't getting a prize for it. How do I put this carefully in the open meetings? Let me choose my words carefully. By September twenty second, my feeling is that the mood of the committee will be that we need to fully understand our legal pathway through this to conclude it. Does that make sense?
Yep.
And I'm curious if you would be best to be advised collectively on that because you're going to share in the expense and risk of that.
Are we speaking about that closed session tonight?
Uh, yeah, we have a little bit of update. So my question was, do we want anyone coming to that, for example, like our legal counsel on talking now about what arbitration would look like and what are risks in arbitration? We've just zoomed them in, right?
That would be the, one of the closed portions.
Yeah, or do we just save that for I C F committee to deal with?
Discuss it in closed session tonight.
That's what I was curious about, if you want to deal with it collectively or not.
Mayor.
Listen, I believe it come a point where council needs to make the decision collectively. Uh, it's a little bit much for
Direct committee.
Three of us to bear that burden. And I really think that the whole council needs to be appraised of what's coming. That's my opinion.
I would like to hear from a legal standpoint, what the pros and cons are and what the risks are and what, yeah. I, I think that's a
We'll have to budget some money for that one.
We need that, is Zoomer, can you just get that information?
Well, I, I, I think Carol actually would be game just to
Zoom in.
Zoom in.
Okay.
And then do that with us at a, at a time we agreed, I think she'd be very much open to that.
I think it's important to hear, like, I, I know that you talk to people and then you come to us, but it's important to hear a person's voice and someone who actually does this for a living. Not saying that you don't know that kind of stuff, but just to be able to hear, just to be able to hear the,
Close.
I guess the difference in her voice and what she would say and how that would come across so that I could get an idea as to, uh, no, we don't want to go down that road, or yes, that's probably what we want to do, right?
So we can hopefully invite Carol to do minutes or time on that. This will be an interesting agenda because with this many delegations, we'll probably, okay, we're a little ahead of schedule, a little behind, let's go on this one for a minute, discuss until we get here.
Jump around.
Be patient.
Flexible, yeah.
This is what we'll have to be. Um, and then on the Blood Tribe, I wondered about, do we want to try to, to revisit the truth and reconciliation concept? Or at least to strike something where we're doing some initiatives in recognizing and improving our relations?
Counselor Self.
I would roll all of those items up and put them in abeyance until we see what the results are of the Blood Tribe election.
Potentially, yeah. Potentially that's something we consider for sure.
Go ahead, Mayor.
There is someone that was very willing to help us, can't remember the name of that fellow, that we communicated with.
Oh, Tony Delaney?
Yeah. That could be a person that has done a lot of work in the department and could be a tremendous, yeah.
And Leroy and Harriet, have you run there?
So I think regardless of the
They're consistently there now, and so they could be with us.
I think regardless of what the election brings, I think that could, that could bring us in a proper path in order for later on, get results.
So what do you suggest as far as, Counselor Self, you suggested maybe we wait post-election on this item and deal with it at our regular meeting? Or do we bring someone in who's not an elected official potentially?
Yeah.
And then prepare for the election.
What do we want to hear from them if we bring them in? What do we want to discuss with them? I mean, if Tony comes, we gotta have something to talk to him about, I mean.
For sure.
Brown.
I'm just thinking of timeframe here.
Yeah.
I'm feeling like this is gonna be a really long day, which I'm all about. However, no, but it's just like, really?
There's a lot here.
Yeah.
No question.
I, like, I would have no prob, is this important to me? Absolutely. Is it something that has to be done on this day? Maybe not. Just because I'm worried about the timeframe and we've got all of these people coming to speak to us and we want to make sure to be respectful of their time and our time, and I just feel like we're starting to get
I wonder, I wonder if we can do like a top five most important things that we want to talk about in the day, and then if we find that we have some time, we can revert to some other things on that agenda.
A dozen things on last year's agenda.
Usually in years past, actually tried to schedule them on priority.
Yeah.
Right, it's like, so if we only get halfway through, hey, next C C W, we pick up where we left off.
That's, that's another one I'm thinking.
But it's tougher with delegations.
That's my point.
Yeah.
Go ahead, yeah.
The reason, personally, I think it's a very important item, the same way as you do. And, uh, I really feel that somehow, if we could have a communication before the elections with those, Tony Delaney or Harriet, have you run there, and with Marcel or with Charlie, if we could have that before that time, I think it would allow us to be prepared to know how to approach next council, next elected council. Because we have not done that right up to now. I think if we understood the protocol, if we understood how to go about to be able to address those issues, then we would be running once the election is, is there and we know who is in place. That, that is, my concern is timing.
Counselor Barnes.
I remember Mayor Spearman talking about their truth and reconciliation, and they went into it without a lot of discussion or preparation using the Blood Tribe. And they got a, he said he got an earful for almost an hour at that meeting of that they didn't include them in enough of the discussion. And I, I agree with the mayor, I think it's a very important thing that we establish a protocol that they feel how we can be involved and how they can help us, to, to guide us to have some kind of a consensus. And I think that's a very important thing. If we're going to have some success with this, that they need to be involved right off the bat in this.
Counselor Self.
We all agree that this is important, so if it is important, then let's dedicate a special council, not nuke the one in September.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with you, Counselor. It's, it's just a matter of timing, let's do it.
Yeah.
Just so I'm clear on that, Counselor, say, your meeting, so we canceled the one, the meeting in September, but this is scheduled for the same day. Do you want to move this a day potentially and keep your council meeting?
I'm saying, well, we could do that too, I'm saying keep this part as part of a special meeting of council.
Set a date for it.
Yeah, set a date for it, and then we're, so it could be, whatever.
As a special meeting, you're talking?
Yes.
Right, I see.
So we deliberately focus on this particular thing for that meeting.
Yeah, Counselor Brown.
Because
Yeah.
No, I think, no, no, I think, so
Yeah, Counselor Brown has
So I, I agree, I think it has to be before, I think, and the respectful way of handling it, like Counselor Self said, I feel like is to designate a day so we have a special meeting and then we invite them. So we're not trying to fit them into this twenty second or whatever. So we are being respectful of their time, we invite them to this meeting on such and such a day at such and such a time because that's what's important to us, is the truth and reconciliation and how we're going about it and how we're gonna handle it. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, Counselor Bingham and then Counselor Self.
How do you know who are gonna be the players? I mean, you, you set something out like that and, and you got, how many Blood Tribe, uh, council now? Hoping they're gonna get back on, on council. I, I think we need to know who our players are and, and where, where they basically sit before we call a meeting like this.
Counselor Self.
Well, and I think the mayor's already answered that question, most of the people she was talking about are not elected officials. So we have the fifteenth and the twenty ninth of September where we have no meetings.
I actually do have a meeting.
Everybody okay with that?
I, I think one of those days, we need to have that meeting.
So why don't we keep either date and see if those folks are available either date?
Do we need a recommendation?
Yeah.
In the foundation?
Yes.
September?
Yeah, I guess the twenty second.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yeah, sorry, I'm just checking on something here. Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm just pulling up my calendar. So I make a recommendation that we have a special meeting in regards to truth and reconciliation and that we invite, um, the, uh, people that we have talked about today um, to this meeting to help us go through this process so we do it respectfully. Dates we're looking at, sorry, what was the first one?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth of the twenty ninth.
The fifteenth of the twenty ninth. We ask for those days and then we see where we're at.
A friendly amendment to the recommendation, if I might, Counselor.
Tuesday.
We'll just say intermunicipal relations with the Blood Tribe.
Okay.
That would be one of the topics for certain.
Clearly, that's what I said, uh-huh.
All in favor of that?
All in favor.
That may be the twenty ninth is what I've been administratively pushing for, but we'll talk to you.
Okay.
I have meetings on the fifteenth, J D and I.
Fifteenth through twenty ninth, you say?
Yeah, because, because I have to prepare.
It's the fifth Tuesday, nothing should be booked on that.
We have to get them on site. Right there.
Yeah, for a fifth Tuesday, you have any committee meetings, then it's the fifth week. Um, my last, well, there's some other, uh, and this one actually will get a bit of discussion next week. It'll lead to some follow-up discussion as part of the budget. This may not need to be on this agenda, by the way, with the West area irrigation as a capital project. I did this last week, but it's kind of developed a little bit more over the last few days. So we may, um, that one may not need to be an agenda item for this meeting, to be honest. I think we'll get that sorted out through our council meetings. Uh, and then I had some additional items, which you haven't expressly said this is, this is in our priority wheelhouse, but things like this here, Bill Seven came out, which allows for you to give tax deferrals of forgiveness for certain, uh, non-residential properties within your community. And what we're seeing is communities around us are starting to do this.
Yeah.
They're starting to develop policy around this idea. And so the question is, not that we have to keep up with the Joneses, but I think we should have some thorough discussion about your position on what's afforded us under Bill Seven. Reynolds, Rich, as a former, recently came out with some guidance on Bill Seven because they've seen some pitfalls to it. I said it on the webinar, it was actually with Carol Zakuski, she put on the seminar last week. And so I've got a lot of information from her on that now, about how to, if you want to entertain this, here's some best practice. So I'm curious if that's of interest as one of those additional items, if we have, you know, half an hour, forty-five minutes that we want to discuss?
I, I Personally, I think if we have time, let's do it, but let's not crime.
So I'll have it as an additional, no delegations for it, but just there if we need, and then the next big one is this prohibition business.
That's a big one.
Um, I did just read yesterday, I asked Reynolds Mirth to put together a memo on what they think our discretion, not discretion, that's not right word, your authority as a council is
Authority, yeah.
Help guide this in the community. So I got a first draft of that yesterday, I haven't gone through it yet. So we're starting to get some feedback and it's starting to get figured out a little bit. There's still many unknowns on this, by the way, it's still not totally clear. But I, I think it's something that you're gonna want to get out in front of as best you can and determine how you're going to, to handle this. So, um, I'm hoping to have some pretty robust legal direction by this, this meeting. I've, I've had R M R F proceedings, but they were the ones that helped us about ten years ago when we were looking at, did council have discretion over the types of classes of licenses? Should they request prohibition to remove? And it just so happens that Nick Parker, who is a lawyer for R M R F now, happens to work for the problems. And so they're working with him to kind of get that figured out a little bit now, and we're doing some work there. So I don't have clear answers for you on everything today, but I think I will by, as clear as it can be by the twenty second.
Yeah.
It's still gonna be a bit messy, there's going to be risk there, I'll tell you that, but we'll have to look through that. So is that something also of interest as one of those other items?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right. And then I had A R D N, J D, a presentation on this. This is one that I would say, not to minimize your work on it, J D, but as, as a, as a last priority that we want to discuss some housing initiatives, some government-funded housing, that if it's there, I'll, I'll have the information gathered and if we have a chance, well, we'll hit it a little bit. That's fair.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any glaring omissions from your agenda? It's a full day, I have no debate about that. We'll bring in breakfast, lunch, and hopefully not dinner, but breakfast and lunch anyway.
So we're starting at noon, is that what you said?
Those are not especially for that agenda, possibly because it's so full. But I was wondering, under infrastructure, you were talking at one point of the, um, need to have a twinning of the water treatment, uh, a twinning of the sewer line. Sooner or later, we need to have that discussion somewhere.
Yeah, and I think just when we start budget discussions in October, that's a natural place for us to start
Right.
looking at the long-term capital.
Another one was a speed internet, fiber optic.
Yeah.
What do we intend to do with that? Another one was a solar farm, what is that, that we can do more, uh, regarding the solar farm? Or, uh, pushing the government changes in their way of looking at distribution and costs? Can we sooner or later not have to pay them? So those are, are things that I was wondering about. The irrigation line, I also was wondering
It's on your agenda a week from today.
Right, and there was also a desire for some people in town to hook up to those irrigation lines?
They'll be presenting to you.
Oh, okay, perfect, you see, I was thinking right direction. Yeah, so I just wondered about those infrastructure.
Again, we could, we could have a planning week, which we all meet each other.
No, it doesn't have to be on that thing.
Yeah, we'll get that on subsequent agendas, for sure, I've got your, your E J on that.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
So do we want to recess and have some supper and do that? Anybody wanna make a motion? Go ahead.
I make a motion to take a break for fifteen minutes?
All in favor? Great, thank you.
Can we give the dates of the A U M A?
Twenty second, twenty third, twenty fourth.
Twenty third, twenty fourth.